All right. Good evening. Today is Tuesday, January 26. This is the regular meeting of the Rhinebeck Central School District Board of Education. Can I have an approval, a motion to approve the minutes of the January 12, 2021 regular meeting?
Second.
Any discussion or corrections? Seeing none, all those in favor? All those are in favor. Okay. Next, we have our report of the superintendent, Albert.
All right. Hi. Good evening, everyone. So last week, we reopened the school buildings after we had one week pause that we put into place at the end of the week prior. We continue to monitor the COVID data and we synthesize all the feedback from the health department and the local health providers. We're also monitoring the student and staff attendance levels. All of those things go into our decision-making matrix. We remain committed to the operations protocols that we have in place to comply with all of the best recommendations. And I just want to point out that we recognize just how difficult the quarantine measures are for all of those who are impacted. But we do know that those quarantines are effective at mitigating the spread, both within the school and more specifically within the community as a whole. There's been a lot of buzz about vaccination among our employees in particular, and it's been a challenge across the country to secure doses to meet demands. Today, in fact, we were notified that a link would go live also around 1:45. We were told that at 4 o'clock, a link would go live. So you know, every single superintendent in Dutchess County was staring at their email, waiting for that to come in, and we shared that link with our employees. There were 600 appointments. They were booked within two minutes of the link going live. I mean, that is a challenge when you have about 10,000 people who are eligible and 600 appointments. So I know that that has been frustrating for many. We did have a good number of people who were able to get appointments that are scheduled actually for Thursday that let me know this afternoon. But I, most people, when they clicked on that link, went to a page that said, no appointment available, and that was within moments of my email being sent. As a reminder, on next Monday, there'll be a community town hall. I have shared a link for all families to provide questions or topics so that I can design the time to best address those areas. And in addition to that event, this week, the building principals will be distributing surveys to parents, students, and our staff to follow up on the previous survey that we administered in the fall. And I am most proud of the student councils at both BMS and RHS who worked to develop the student survey tools. And we strongly believe that the student-developed instruments are going to provide us with information and feedback that only questions designed by students would elicit. So I'm really proud of the students for taking a role in that. They're very interested in the survey that they received. And in fact, it was, I think, the genesis was through an interview with Rhinebeck Reality with Emily. And so the students took the front seat in designing those. That feedback's going to be really valuable as we develop a professional learning for our February 12 conference day, as well as just continuing to analyze the feedback that we receive. And we are currently looking at the model. One shift that I know the board is aware of is the addition of the remote teachers in grades one to four and soon to be in kindergarten. You know, that is something that's going to be a work in progress. We'll continue to monitor that. But I think looking at the entire system, I'm just very proud of all of the customization, the commitment that the teachers have employed, being very creative to meet the needs of individual students and doing as much as they can to connect even when the timing of that isn't as great as much as we would like it to be. So as we approach the third quarter, we'll look at our strengths and opportunities for further development. There's been a lot of professional learning this year through all of this crisis. There's been so much learning, so we hope to bring people together to talk about those successes so that we can make improvements moving forward. I shared with the board and with the community that Duchess Bosse has established the Center for Sustainability and Climate Education. I shared again at the board level, because it has been a commitment of the district even prior to my arrival of looking at those opportunities for sustainability. So we will be playing a significant role in the spring summit that the center is hosting, and that's going to be on April 14. And I hope to see a lot of Rhinebeck administrators, students, and teachers at that event. The other link I shared with the family are actually open to community members, so I hope that people saw that email last week and will participate. I also provided the board with an update in writing about interscholastic athletics. And after I sent that update, the governor surprised all of us by letting us know that the high-risk winter sports would be eligible to begin as of February 1. Pending local health department approval, which has not yet happened in our area, but we'll continue to monitor that. We are eligible to have our basketball players engage in offseason workouts. There's strict protocols with one ball per individual, and the ball is sanitized after use. But should there be approval, that would start on February 1. And lastly, I just wanted to welcome, I know that we have both Dr. Davenport and Pat Sexton here to speak, and so I just wanted to say welcome. And that concludes my report.
Any questions from the board for Albert? Okay, thank you for that, Albert. We have an opportunity now for public comment. If you'd like to make a public comment, please raise your hand or let me know that you'd like to make a comment, and then you just need to identify your name and address before you speak. I don't see any. Okay, we have another opportunity if you change mind. We're going to move on to reports and discussion. The first report is going to be the governance committee, and you board member should have gotten this in their emails. And that is Matt.
Thanks, Diane. So the governance committee met on January 13 and made the following decisions after discussion. The first related to the format of the committee meeting reports themselves. They should focus on the key decisions made. Also, that it would be helpful to provide a reminder to the community that the full minutes are posted to the district website if people would like to read more about the discussion that took place prior to the decisions. Secondly, Diane, you've already covered this related to the protocols of the Zoom meetings, just identifying for the public, making public comment just to identify themselves and their addresses, and also to please have their cameras on. Third, the committee discussed the format of the superintendent's report and decided that if there are any topics the board would like covered in that report, just to communicate those to Albert in advance, and also to limit any questions during this portion of the meeting to the topics covered in the report. And lastly, the committee noted that this is essentially a mid-year check-in point. And if the other board members have any recommendations about the operations of the board or the committee, particularly in the context of the Zoom environment, just to please let us know. The committee doesn't meet again until March 10, and if anyone has any questions on any of that, I'd be happy to take them.
Okay, I don't see any hands. Last chance, any questions for governance?
Hopefully, I summarize that.
We're all, we're all getting the hang of doing our new minutes, but we'll get there. All right. The next committee meeting report is strategic planning. Those are mine. Just to highlight under our, Tom gave us an overview of the initial budget preparation. I just want to highlight that two numbers that are set, the CPI, which is 1.23, and the tax growth factor of 1.36. And under decisions, the committee talked about wanting to, as much as possible, identify our COVID-related expenses so that we can have a clear picture of what those have cost us this year. Let's see. Under the fund balance, we've talked about fund balance, and we'd like the board to consider creating a capital reserve fund. This, it's a reserve that most, a lot of schools have, and it can help fund any future capital projects. It would require a vote of the community to create the fund and to use the fund. So if, if we have the opportunity to add funds, we would like the board to consider that. It would need to be put on in May on the, to be voted on. So that's something we have to decide the next month, you know, next few months. Tom didn't have the exact timeline of that, but we'd have to decide that pretty soon if that's something that we'd like to do. We're going to have in our upcoming budget presentation, that's also something that's going to be different this year. So I just want to note that our first one is coming up on February 9. It's going to include operation and maintenance, transportation, debt service, and employee benefits. So that'll be a new way that we're doing the budget presentations this year. Let's see. Thinking everything else is in the minutes. So if there is any questions for strategic planning, or anybody want to, anything they want to discuss under those decisions? Megan?
Yeah, I was just curious about the capital reserve fund. Are there any drawbacks to having that, and why hasn't the district had one up to this point?
Tom, you could jump in if you want, but I would say, most of the words, if we don't have them, it's probably we didn't have money to put in them is what I'm going to assume. Tom will correct me if I'm wrong there. And drawbacks, I, Tom, you could speak to that.
Well, the, we do have a capital reserve fund. It only has about $4,500 on it, and it's really, really, really old. We're trying to identify when it was created. But the, the pros and cons of a capital reserve are the following. The definitely the pro is it helps you when you have your next capital project because you can use those monies to reduce the overall cost to the taxpayer, which can be very, very helpful, especially when you tie it into state aid, building aid, and getting that back. It can almost make a project not cost anything additional to the taxpayer. The biggest issue with it is once you put the money in there, it can only be taken out for that purpose. Okay? You can't say, oh, I need the money over here now. No, 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 no. It's designated for that purpose. And you would need a vote of the community to use those funds. Okay? You just, it's not a vote of the board. You have to go back to the community to say, we have a, a project of X amount of money, and we're going to use so much of our capital reserve. So those, the pros and cons of it to it. And you know, we really haven't been in a position to be able to fund something like that, but it looks as though we have an opportunity to at least create one and start funding it for our future for our kids.
Great. Thank you.
So then, Tom, we don't have to do anything as far as, as far as creating a fund then. It's only if we wanted to add funds to it.
Well, no, what would happen is the following. First of all, the creation of this proposition would be on the ballot for the, the annual election and budget vote. And what would occur is not only the creation, but also the maximum amount of money that we could fund it with. Okay? And a lot of times you'll go out there and they'll put a high in the sky, $10 million. It will take many, 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 many years to get to that, but you put it limit as to how high it is. But when it comes to putting money into the reserve, that is a board, to put money into the capital reserve after it's been created, is a role of the Board of Education. They determine how much money would be going into the fund on a yearly basis, if any is available.
Any, anybody else? All right. I don't see any other hands. So we're going to move on to our report from Arts and Education Collaborations, Education Network for Teachers and Artists. And with us today, we have Pat Sexton. I think it's, I think you're alone, Pat.
I think I'm unmuted now. Okay. Hi, everybody.
Hi, Pat. Welcome.
Good to see you all. It's great to see you. I know so many of you, and it's so great to see so many familiar faces. But there are some people here that, that I don't know. So I just wanted to introduce the Education Network for Teachers and Artists, ENSA, is what we shortened it to because it's a lot to say. And we've been working in the Rhinebeck School District for about a little over 15 years, and we've been working with the Red Hook School District about six years. We usually have six to seven programs running in the Rhinebeck Schools and about the same amount in the Red Hook Schools. So I just wanted to give you just a brief introduction to ENSA. Like I said, a lot of you already know it, and many of you have had students in our programs. And then I'd like to read a three-page article that we've written about a program that was pivoted last year because of the Chancellor Livingston fourth-grade teachers who were committed to having this, this project happen a month, well, not even a couple of weeks after we had our closure in the middle of March. So I just want to, can I do some screen sharing here now, Whitney?
Yep, you should be able to.
Okay. Everybody seeing the big blue screen here? Yes? Okay. I'm just going to go through this really quickly because you've got this in your packets, I think, from Whitney, but I just wanted to give you just a little bit of visuals of what ENSA's been able to do with the students. Basically, what ENSA does is teach core subjects through the arts. We give teachers and students the opportunity to allow knowledge and mastery to be expressed through creative processes. And you know, as you all know, I'm preaching to the choir here in many ways. The arts and using the arts to enhance learning is a very well-tested and very well-documented way to really engage students and to enliven material for them. So I'm just going to skip some of the verbiage there and just get into some of our programs. This was our Sala Witt program that we did with the high school, middle school, and there was a small part that was done in the elementary school as well. And it tied math and writing and art together. So we worked in the geometry classes in middle and high school, and we also worked in the art classes there. We were also able to tie field trips into this for, the high school kids went to Massimoca and the Clark Museum, and the middle school kids went to Dia Beacon. Books Journey, that is the piece that we're going to talk about a lot tonight. This has been at Chancellor Livingston for 15 years. And this is a process where the students write, illustrate, book bind, and create their own books, and then we share it with the community at a major event. This year, we were able to bring the Salem Witch Trials to the BMS and to be able to realize some of that improv work while the students were learning with the Salem Witch Trials. Taking a Stand is a, is a project that we've worked with in DK's eighth grade for several years now. And it's about students studying civil rights, human rights, women's rights, whichever they choose to get into, and to visualize what they're learning about those processes. We're in the process right now of working with D's class in a much more reduced form from this because a lot of this is not possible under the current circumstances. A lot of writing goes on about this, about the students' process and what they're about. This is a class that we're doing with seventh grade, so, science with anatomy and learning about the skeletal system, and the students build a full-size skeleton with rolls of newspaper. And this is the one that we do in the high school where they do the same kind of thing, only with small skeletons and raffia paper to create the muscle group. So they're actually hands-on learning about, you know, all these different kinds of things. And these are some of the other programs that ENSA is involved with at the Rhinebeck Schools, Madagascar Day, History Walking Tour of Rhinebeck. We've got a kindergarten program that we've been working on for a couple of years, and hopefully we'll get to that one, maybe this year, maybe next year. And the, we're planning a visiting artist series for the spring. So I want to stop sharing that one because the piece that I really wanted to talk with you about tonight is a, let's see, is that, do you have an article up on the screen now?
No.
Yes? Okay, great. Okay. This is an article that-
Nothing's up, nothing's up.
Okay. Hang on one sec then. Let me do share screen. Got it now?
Yes.
Okay, great. Okay, this is a, this is an article that I'm going to read to you very quickly. Again, you guys have a copy of this so that you'll be able to, to see it as well. But I really wanted to share this story because this was the story of the dedication of your fourth-grade teachers to making this program that had been going on for, you know, 13 years before, happened for the kids this year. And they really didn't want the kids to miss out on this opportunity. So they really dug in, and we worked on this and pulled it together in about three or four weeks to do the pivot that was needed to do in order to make it happen. Even the pandemic couldn't stop this journey. It's a rite of passage. How can we not do it? That was the dilemma that faced Chancellor Livingston School's fourth-grade teacher Shannon Denise, Erin O'Brien, and Julie Tate when their Rhinebeck, New York, school was shuttered in mid-March 2020 due to the COVID-19 virus. And Shannon and Julie, I think, are on this call with us tonight. So this is a great story for them. For 14 years, the CLS teachers had collaborated with ENSA to deliver an eight-week-long creative writing program entitled Books Journey. Students prepare for this experience their entire year, and it's one that students have anticipated as a treasured fourth-grade program. Months of ELA units in writing all lead up to a Books Journey in which students demonstrate their learned skills and write, illustrate, hand-build, and hand-buy their own original books. They usually show their work at a year-end event, Meet the Young Authors' Day, with families, peers, and community members in attendance. Despite the daunting pivot that needed to happen to make any teaching possible, these teachers decided that the virus was not going to cheat their students out of this highly anticipated experience. They were determined to find a way to keep up the excitement and enthusiasm they had generated for the entire school year moving towards this goal. They set to work with ENSA's artists to take the full program online and into the living rooms and kitchens of 65 budding young authors. A Books Journey is an ongoing collaborative program created with several ENSA artists and the CLS fourth-grade teachers. ENSA's philosophy is to work together with classroom teachers to design customized arts-based programs to meet the needs and goals of the teachers and the students, and teach any subject through the arts, science, math, ELA, social studies, et cetera. For ongoing programs, the basic structure may change from year to year depending on the current curricula, specific needs of the cohort, and evolving learning outcomes as defined by the teachers. The goal is to have students demonstrate their knowledge and mastery through creative process. A Books Journey takes approximately eight weeks and involves visits from several publishing professionals, authors, illustrators, editor, book designer. The program usually includes a field trip to Oblong Books to learn more about marketing, the marketing of books. By the end of the program, the students have created their own books and also have an understanding of the full range of publishing industry jobs and components. Guest artists visit with the students every two weeks, and in between visits, the teachers work with students during ELA sessions to reinforce the skills and story structure, grammar, spelling, and punctuation as the students craft their books. The excitement among the students builds as their books develop over the final weeks of school, and the culminating event, Meet the Young Authors' Day, is viewed as a special event and a source of pride for the students as they showcase their books to their families, fellow classmates, community members, and local media. A Books Journey is a personally-guided, hands-on, peer-to-peer, and community-shared programming in so many ways. And that was one of the challenges of making the program successful. How do you reimagine that much personal contact through a virtual experience? So the restructuring, in addition to the three CLS fourth-grade teachers, two teaching assistants, two special ed teachers, six ENSA artists, and two ENSA facilitators engaged the students throughout this eight-week program. A variety of arts materials were prepared and distributed to the students at home. Funding for the program came from the Rhinebeck CSD Arts and Education Committee, Dutchess County Bosse's Arts and Ed Program, Thompson Trust, and the Rhinebeck Science Foundation. All the funding organizations were encouraging and offered their complete support of taking the program online. The teachers needed to find ways to help students concentrate on their ELA lessons, and ENSA needed to take the specific skills they teach and invert into a virtual world with the same level of visual inspiration and engaging activities as in the in-person sessions. The CLS teachers Denise O'Brien and Tate, along with special ed teachers Michelle LeBotsky, Danielle Christensen Hicks, and their teaching aides Gretchen Warner and Anthony Shanice, added many extra hours of one-on-one instruction with students to explore their themes, character development, and story structure. They were able to bring a year's worth of ELA units into focus for these students so they could understand how learning the basics, coupled with their creativity, could help them write a great book. ENSA assembled and packaged the needed art materials into kits that were mailed to every student. Class parents assisted ENSA facilitators in the process. The CLS teachers gathered information about each student's story and helped ENSA artists define a thematic color palette for each student's art materials in order to give them some choice and flexibility for their book design. Students were also welcome to use any additional art materials they had at home in their design. ENSA artists were all asked to retool and expand their PowerPoint presentations to add more visuals, make everything more readable on the small screen, and make it available to share as needed. Two short instructional how-to videos for the book cover and book binding process were also produced. The process, the ENSA facilitators worked with the teachers to set a schedule of online sessions that would include each of the three classrooms in separate sessions. Each class had five one-hour online sessions with individual artists, and the time for live questions and answers was built into each session. To ensure good attendance, the CLS teachers sent extra schedule reminders and impressed upon the students how important it was to be present at the live online artist presentations every week. And throughout the shutdown of schools nationwide, teachers had reported one of the difficulties in remote learning was getting students to show up at scheduled sessions and to be on time. Thanks to the extra communication efforts of the teachers, the program had near-perfect attendance at each session. The three ENSA artists charged with inspiring the students, Lisa Klein Ransom, James Ransom, and Susannah Leonard Hill, created engaging and colorful presentations and shared their own creative processes with the students. Editor Pat Sexton were collaboratively on a sample document with students, providing editing suggestions. Book designer Kimba Baker showed students examples of successful book designs, discussed choices of color, font, illustration, and walked them through the physical construction of their book covers and a Japanese book binding technique that each student used on their books. John Musty from Oblong Books and Music and Independent Bookstore in Rhinebeck took them on a virtual tour of the store and talked about techniques that publishers and booksellers employ to get readers excited about new books. Parents also played an integral part in this year's program, from the distribution of materials to helping their children learn to use next top tech, new technology, to helping cheer them along as they wrote. Parents had a front row seat to their child's creative process and were an important driver of the program. They learned so much about how they helped their children succeed by watching this creative process, and they got to see the depth of work and the attention teachers put into honing student skills every day. Parents expressed to the teachers a whole new level of respect and understanding of the hard work of teaching. Over the last two weeks of school, the students shared their books with each other in online sessions. Teachers invited the students to present their books in a variety of ways. Some read their books live online or shared pictures of their finished work, and others produced videos of their book, and still others presented books through a read-along PowerPoint with images of their book pages. Giving students this degree of choice in how they presented their materials increased engagement and extended the creativity and problem-solving skills they all brought to the project. The students felt that the teachers were, this, the teachers felt that the students were just as excited and proud of their books as in years past. They felt the program was successful in reaching students and extracting the needed focus, thought, and skills to create a successful piece of creative writing and shape it into a complete book. A Books Journey forges a special relationship between student, teacher, and artist. It's a wonderful collaboration that allows for plenty of exploration. It demands focus and skills in order to complete. The teachers truly felt the void of everyday interactions with their students, reading their body language, having discussions on various storylines, teaching the skills involved with writing, helping them manage their time, and watching the development of the work on a daily basis. But the use of technology was very helpful in this process. Students were able to input their work and have the teachers comment and make suggestions right on the same document. And in this way, the teachers were able to maintain that one-on-one relationship that's so important in learning and trusting and sharing accomplishments. Most importantly, the teachers felt that the accomplishment and pride the students had in their work added to their bond as classmates, which was very valuable at this time during the crisis. They'd completed their rite of passage, had their own unique voices heard, enjoyed each other's talents, and finished fourth grade with a wonderful memory and a book to keep as their very own work of art. So I just wanted to share with you how hard these teachers worked and how much they put into making this a success, using the tools, and, and really putting themselves into the, into the, into the challenge of it all. So I just think that my fourth-grade team was amazing, and I just wanted to let you all know about that, too.
Pat, I want to thank you for being here, and I just want to thank you and all, and all the fourth-grade staff. I'm so happy this was able to continue during the pandemic because it's one of the kind of rites of passage of fourth grade, I think it's become over the years, and it's truly a great project, as are many of the projects you've brought into the school. I can't say enough about them. You know what a fan I am of your work.
We're very interested in, you know, doing more if you've got more, you know, kinds of things that you want to do around diversity or wellness or mindfulness. I mean, we have a lot of very talented people that work with us, and we're delighted to be part of the whole scene.
Does anyone else have any thoughts or questions for Jacqueline?
So thank you to you, Pat, and ENSA, and to the fourth-grade teachers for, for making that happen. So I thank you to, to you, Pat, and NTA, and to the fourth-grade teachers for, for making that happen. I, is there, will it happen this spring as well?
We're, we're making plans to make that so, as long as we can, you know, get the funding and do all the things that we were able to do last year. I think that the team is ready, and we're already putting things on the calendar and, and working on that at this point.
Excellent. That's great to hear. And I, I think you mentioned that the Salem Witch Trials were able to happen this year as well. Were any of the other programs able to continue? I know most of the pictures were for past years.
Right. But most of them are ongoing projects. The, the science piece with the skeletons, we weren't able to do this year. It was just way too many moving parts for the amount of time that the teachers have with the students. We are finishing up the piece with D-Cake that is a, a version of Taking a Stand. They're going to be collecting a, we've worked with an artist to do a process called Visual Thinking Strategies, which is taking an image and having the students tell you what they see in the image, what they see that makes them say that about the image. So there's a lot of evidence-based learning there. And then at the end of this, they're going to be, and they're currently reading Animal Farm as well. And at the end of this, they're going to find their own image from either civil rights movement, human rights movement, women's rights, whichever they choose, and they're going to do their presentation piece because in eighth-grade ELA, they do a, a piece where they either write a speech or write some kind of a, a piece of text that they share. So that's going to be around that. So they're going to have that little piece of the, the civil rights, human rights connected to that and using visual stimulus to get them to talk about an emotional feeling that they have as a result of researching and looking at these images.
Excellent. Thank you.
Anybody else?
Pat, I just wanted to, to thank you for this, and as well, I'm so glad to, to see, I see Shannon and Julie's cameras on, so thank you for being here and for making that happen in, in the midst of all that. It's so easy just to say, oh, this can't happen, you know, particularly in the spring when we were all sort of shocked by the sudden closure. So thank you for that. But what I want to commend and really take note of is how much this deals with thinking, how it's not, this is not just the arts, and I, and I don't mean to say it that way, but there's so much thinking that goes into that non-linguistic representation of ideas and how you, about communication. So everything that we know about how kids learn comes from all of these, these projects that you do on an ongoing basis. And I think there's such a powerful education component that has an impact across all disciplines. And I just wanted to thank you for that, that relationship and partnership and the creativity. Yeah, I was very inspired when I got to look at your slideshow, you know, being new here, that was very helpful for me to get a sense of, of all of that. And I think it's just very strong educationally, and I, I would love to, to develop that together even more.
Yeah. Well, thank you so much because you're absolutely on the money with the, the skills that are developed: problem skills, critical thinking, working together, a lot of the, the stuff that we do, the students are working together with their peers. And they, one of the things that the students have really expressed is how impressed they are with their cohorts and seeing how creative and how sharp they are in finding all of these ways to connect this every day, why am I learning this stuff, to where they're going to go with it as creators and makers. Diane, to your other piece, one more thing that's actually is going to be happening. I just noticed one of my artists, Emily Haupt, is on the, the call here. We're going to be doing a Shakespeare piece with D-Cake's class at the end of the year. We're going to be working on Romeo and Juliet with them.
Nice. That's exciting.
Yeah.
Unless there's any last questions, Pat, thank you so much for being here, and also to the fourth-grade teachers, thank you for being here. This is, this is, it's always nice to hear and to see what's going on in the classroom. It's helpful for us in our work, of course.
Well, thank you so much for having us. We appreciate all your support, and we just love being part of this district, and, and it has just been terrific. So thank you.
Thanks. All right, now, we're going to move on to the Rhinebeck High School Community Service Requirement. I believe I'll be turning that over to Dr. Davenport.
Thanks, Diane. Good evening, everyone. I hope you and your families are, continue to do well. Before I begin, I just want to make a, a, a quick, good news announcement. We had a very successful administration of the PSAT today. In particular, I want to note the work of Jeff Palazzolo, Robert Haywood, Mark Berg, Anita Thompson, Susanna Renzi, Isabel Yusowitz, and our professional staff in providing really a flawless testing environment. We have never administered a standardized test during a pandemic and on the edge of a, a snowstorm, but everything went very well. So I, I really wanted to share accolades for, for our team. In terms of our, the high school's community service program and requirement, I thought, with your permission, I'd give you a, a quick overview of, of where we are. Wanted to talk through the proposal from the Community Service Advisory Committee regarding future directions of the program and then end with an example of a new program developed by Mr. Moore in partnership with Brookmead. So in terms of the snapshot, currently in our senior class, about one-third of our seniors have completed the forty-hour or more requirement, which is a, a local graduation requirement, as you know. In our junior class, about a quarter of our students have completed that forty-hour requirement. I think, and we think, the Community Service Committee, and I think that in both instances, it's important to take into account, of course, the, the global health context. In addition, we all recall that last spring, the governor put New York on pause, effectively at least last year, and maybe unintentionally, certainly unintentionally, you know, ending a community service program for us. So the, the Community Service Advisory Committee, in wanting to continue to promote community service and offer safe opportunities for our students, also began talking about revisiting the requirement and the way it's implemented in our school and addressing what I think are some unintended consequences and maybe some slippage around the forty-hour community service requirement. And in our discussions about a, a community service graduation requirement, thought that it would be important to, to shift emphasis or to combine emphasis with the amount of hours, with the quality of the hours, and would want these experiences to be part of our students' educational program in high school. And that students would use these experiences to research and learn about post-secondary careers. They'd be able to use these experiences to learn about the needs of our community. They'd be able to push themselves and, and challenge their own boundaries. They'd be able to expand their, their, their social networks and meet new people. So with, with those things in mind, both wanting to support a community service, a, a program within the current context, wanting to shift what was an unintentional, I think, movement towards just satisfying hours and checking a box and making the, the experience, I think, more closely aligned to its original intent. The, the advisory committee, as I think the superintendent shared with you, is proposing a, a two-part plan, a community service program plan requirement for graduation for this year, and then for next year and years after that. Very briefly, for this year, for those students who have satisfied the, the traditional graduation requirement, we would recognize those students at our springtime awards assembly. For those students who have not yet completed their community service hours, so to speak, their forty hours, we would continue to offer opportunities. But in the event that they were unable to complete these hours, we would ask those students to write a reflection on how their community service experience helped inform their post-secondary planning or, and expanded their social networks or, and had them get out of their comfort zone. Lastly, for those students, because every circumstance is individual and unique, we wanted to be attentive to those students who may not be able to complete any community service work this year for a variety of reasons. We wanted to offer those students a waiver opportunity. And those waivers, those requests for waivers would be reviewed by the, the committee and submitted for approval to the, to the superintendent and the board. Moving out of this year into twenty-one, twenty-two, again, that we would like, the Community Service Advisory Committee would like to reorient the emphasis to the quality of the community service experience rather than just the amount of hours. Where we will recommend, we would recommend a yearly benchmark of a community service hours completed. We would request at the end of the sophomore year and the senior year that students write a reflection on how their community service work has informed their post-secondary planning, has expanded their horizons, has challenged them personally. And lastly, we would want to recognize in our awards assembly those students who have gone above and beyond in terms of the hours they accrue in, in their community service work. So in a, you know, very, a, a very brief nutshell, that's the, the proposal that the committee and I would like to bring to your attention for your review and for your input. Lastly, if, let's see if I can have this work, I would like to, to share an example of the sort of, of community service plan, oh, if I could share my screen, I don't know if I have that permission, Mr. Cousins and Ms. Drucker. If not, that's.
No, no, you can. I'm just doing it. Sorry. After somebody speaks, I get, I lock it up again. Sorry.
Oh, I get, oh, I'm gonna, I'm gonna take it that page and put that in my playbook.
Well, after Red Hook's problems, I don't want that ever happening here.
Understood. So, uh, Mr. Moore has partnered with Brookmead, and let me see if you'll bear with me for a second, to offer a community service opportunity. It's a pilot for our juniors and our seniors. And this involves, one more shot. Oh, I can't make this work.
Is it not sharing?
It's not. There were? Okay, so this is, uh, what Mr. Moore has called Zoom pals. It's an opportunity for our high school students to connect and meet virtually with clients at Brookmead on a weekly basis. Enables them to meet new people, to expand their social networks. It also helps them learn about post-secondary careers and maybe pushes some students out of their, their comfort zone. This is the, the sort of opportunity we'd like to expand, develop, multiply across other, other various, other areas. Certainly has us take advantage of, of technology of video conferencing, something that, of course, we'll continue to do when we get out of the pandemic. One of the stumbling blocks when we've tried to partner with our local senior citizen homes is actually being able to have our students visit the premises, but now this allows us to visit the premises, allows our students to do that virtually. So this is the sort of experience that we want to continue to offer and build out for our students so that they're able to meet the graduation requirement, inform their post-secondary planning, push themselves out of their comfort zones, expand their, expand their social networks, and learn more about what awaits them after, after high school. I'll stop sharing. So thank you. That's a
Questions?
Disquisition.
Questions for Dr. Davenport?
Jacqueline? Hi. Nice to see you. So I, oh, did, oh, yeah, Pat Sexton's still here. So I think I might still have come up with this question, even if you weren't here, Pat, but certainly, right after that presentation, I'm, I, I think the new proposal sounds really wonderful. I need to digest it, but that's, that's a great refocusing on the intention and spirit behind the, the community hour service. And I like the idea of a written reflection. I'm wondering, was there any discussion of maybe having non-written reflections? Something creative, and, and whether something, you know, an art presentation or a music piece or a video, you know, something besides, I, I think, as a librarian, obviously, I love the written word. But, but also as an artist, I appreciate how much students can, can learn from creating their own independent project, interpreting what it means to them to do creative service. So I'm just wondering, was that discussed at all? Are you open to that?
Thank you for that question. As, as a non-practicing English teacher, my default is always writing something. What a wonderful suggest, what a wonderful suggestion. So no, we did not talk about that, but I absolutely will bring it back to the committee. I think that's, again, in reflecting back to Pat's presentation, that's just a, that's just a great suggestion. Thank you.
Great. So, and one more idea that maybe has already come up, also related to the arts and community service, and you know, and thinking about how do we provide opportunities for students when they can't physically go places? Um, I, I think the Zoom pals, like, I got all, I got all verklempt when, you know, we posted that. So that's wonderful. Really, really great to hear, and kudos to, to Gideon Moore for, for taking that on. But I wonder what sorts of other creative, artistic, community service projects students can do from their homes. You know, I mean, I, I know people are making all sorts of collaborative music pieces and, and other sorts of things that really are works for the community. They're not just musical performance. It's community service when you get to participate in, in something like that. So, so I would ask, as a discussion point, if it hasn't already come up with the arts and music faculty to ask about what kinds of community service ideas they might have that their students could do from home in this time.
Thank you. That, that has not come up. Again, a wonderful suggestion, and I look forward to bringing that back to the committee and then filtering it out to our, our, our arts teachers for their input.
But thank you for, you know, pivoting and, and refocusing, not only because of the pandemic, but just generally the, the program, to make it more meaningful. That's great.
So I'll, I'll just share this out from my own experience, and I only briefly mentioned this to, to Dr. Davenport. But with, with the IB program that some schools offer, their service is actually, has an expectation for creativity. So creativity could be our, in, on our traditional artistic expression, but it could also be problem-solving through engineering. There has to be some ingenuity involved in the service. And they also have an expectation that in addition to at some point you engaging in something creative, something with action, so something physical in nature as well. And that is really, when you find kids pushing themselves who are not normally physical, being physical because they have to kind of fulfill this requirement. Again, it's not about the number, it's about the quality of that. So I think, you know, I really applaud Dr. Davenport and Mr. Moore and the committee for being even, you know, so taking this big step to move away from ours. That's the first part of this is, is having you be about the quality of that and really looking at the individual. And if we can connect this to the work of the counselors, it's so impactful when a student finds their service attached to their own personal growth and development, so that when they're talking about their own journey as a person, whether it's in their college essay or it's in an interview, they're able to have a stronger narrative and a through line of their work and their, you know, what they've kind of committed their time to, that goes beyond, you know, just the studies. So I think that when the, you know, the better we know our students, we're able to find those opportunities that connect them to their own strengths. When they do reflect, it's not just to, again, we don't want it to be checking a box, but for them to develop, and then it just creates well-rounded kids. So I am really happy to see the, the high school making a recommendation to, to move in that direction.
Jacqueline?
I, I love the idea of bringing physical element to it as well. That's, that's great.
Megan?
Thank you for that helpful presentation. I, I'm really happy to hear of the, the, the shift that we're making to the community service program. And I'm also wondering how we're doing with our peer tutoring program for high school students, tutoring even the, the younger ones at Chancellor. younger ones at Chancellor, and if that's counting towards community service hours or if that's something that the committee has discussed?
The, the peer tutoring, you know, in a traditional school year does count for community service hours per the committee. There are, how shall I put this? We want to, we would like to set up the, the peer tutoring through a virtual medium similar to Zoom pals. That's taking longer, I think, from my perspective to, to, to set up than, than we had initially anticipated. So that's, that's on our, on our to-do list, but we haven't gotten to the next, to the next step yet.
Okay, thank you. One of the programs I've been really impressed with is the Bard Math Circle. And I wonder if we could kind of jump on the heels of what they've already gotten to place. Their structure seems so well set up and simplified. I don't know. But that's an idea that comes up. Thank you.
Thank you. Thank you.
Steve, I think I saw your hand.
Dr. D, good to see you.
Nice to see you.
I, I think this is a great shift. My worry is that it's a very big shift of going from something that's quantitative to a quality component. Who determines that it's satisfactory quality work? And how many different experiences do they need to have in a given year or in their, in their full four years? And then last question is, what's the support level that's going to be required to get students to shift? Because I think this is a pretty big shift, especially for Shay who's done already with her 40 hours.
Yeah.
Just from my household, what I'm going to experience when she hears about this. I do think, you know, having gone through Project Lead the Way and watching kids being afraid to try things because they're going to fail, you know, this is a similar thing, I think. And I do think it's going to require quite a bit of support for the kids.
Thank you. So as we, you know, if we transition, what some of the things that will continue is we're still going to ask students to complete a community service form when they've, when they're finished with an experience. We're still going to ask students to record the time. We're still going to have our community service coordinator, you know, vet the experience if it's, or before the student engages in it, or circle back and ensure that the student has completed the hours. In terms of those students, you know, like your daughter who have already completed their hours, we are going to recognize those students and the, and the amount of their work, as I mentioned, in an award ceremony. In terms of shifting and reflecting upon what they've completed either in written format or as, as Jacqueline mentioned, perhaps in an artistic format, we're going to use in the 10th grade and in the 11th grade, our college and careers classes to provide student supports and thinking about, thinking about that and, and reflecting on their community service experience. In terms of how these reflections are evaluated, the, the primary responsibility will fall to Mr. Moore. And on a secondary level, the, the Community Service Advisory Committee. As we've talked about that, and we haven't, you know, really specified, for example, you know, the amount, you know, the number of words, for example, in an essay. We've talked more about how the, this work connects with a student's previous work and maybe future plans. So, you know, we think and we want to flesh that out more fully, that with the work of Ms. Yousiewicz, with the work of our counselors, and certainly Mr. Moore will be able to help students transition to this new framework. Two, we want to make sure that we recognize those students who do put the time in and who aren't only, you know, just checking a box, but are really dedicated and committed to, to weekly or monthly hours in service of others. So we're, we're trying to, you know, shift the quantitative part where we can recognize it in an award ceremony. The requirement portion of the, of the program, we want to shift back to what I think is the original intent of the program, as I read the, reread the document from, I think it's from 2002.
One last follow-up question. Could, could this morph into the more of a mentor type program and, you know, kind of going out to the community and volunteering for, you know, kind of college work or, or career work? You know, one of the goals that came out of the CAC committee was, you know, kind of more opportunities for kids in the workforce to experience, you know, what, you know, different types of careers would, would mean. So could they satisfy it on that approach as well?
You're sitting here right now and without consulting with the coordinator or the committee, I'd say, yeah, I think that sounds like a fantastic idea. And I think it's aligned with, you know, what Mr. Cousins described in terms of students, you know, getting out of their comfort zone, being able to develop a portfolio and being able to speak with their counselors about their interests after high school. So sitting here right now, I think that would certainly qualify for the intent of the community service graduation requirement.
Mark?
Thank you. So I'm, I'm just, I'm intrigued by the, you know, effort to improve the program and make it something that is not just simply checking off boxes of earning 40 hours of community service, but I just want us to be mindful also that not every student is a good writer, not every student is, is creative, and we need to be able to provide opportunities for those students to provide meaningful community service, perhaps without adding extra requirements to the community service. So I, it's like everybody to be mindful of that as well.
Yeah, I, I just wanted to jump in there, Mark. I totally agree with that. I think that a reflection can take many forms, and sometimes it is, it is through a dialogue with somebody, and I think we have to be mindful of that, that if a person is impacted and communicates that impact in different ways, we're not looking for another assignment for students because that defeats the entire purpose of it. So I think that's a really valuable point for, for Dr. Davenport to take back to the committee to look at how, how inclusive and accessible can this be? Because the point would be that we want to cast a broader, more inclusive net for rethinking what does it mean to have an impact on others? And so to do that, I think we have to take that point that you shared to heart.
Yep, totally agree. Thanks, Mark.
And so the first part, when talking about this year's seniors and the different requirements, you said, so one-third of the senior class is completed. Is that typical for this time of year? If you go back even past last year? So is that pre-pandemic? Is that typical where seniors would be about this senior class would be?
Diane, off the top of my head, I don't have that, that information, but I can get it.
That's, that's okay. That's okay. And do you know, you know, obviously in the spring we were shut down, but had this year, have there been opportunities for kids to do their community service?
There have been. Not as, and this is understandable, of course, not as, as frequent as in a, you know, a non-pandemic year, but there have been opportunities that Mr. Moore has publicized and our counselors have publicized.
Okay. I, I mean, going forward, I do, I mean, I like the idea of changing, what everyone, I kind of echo what everyone has said there, and especially what Mark has said. I mean, I don't have to tell you, there are kids that even struggle just to get those hours, you know, and I, I love the idea of the Zoom buddies, but I know there's many kids that that would be completely terrifying and would, would avoid that at all costs. So I, you know, I, I kind of echo that we do need to find an array of things. I think this will be a lot more work for the coordinator going forward. As I look at this, art now, this will require board action, both if we're going to make a change for this year's seniors, and Albert, correct me if I'm wrong, and going forward, right? This is, this will require board action to make these changes.
It would require board action because this is a local requirement.
Right. Now, go ahead.
That's all.
Oh. So going forward, are you looking just to pilot this? Because I know there's a lot of, like, this is a recommendation, but obviously you're going to have to work through the issues. I mean, there are a few things pop up in my mind. I like the idea also that each year, maybe you'd be looking at kids to do something and reflect on it. I kind of like that too, because a lot of kids wait till senior year about this time and then just try to, you know, bang it out. I mean, I do like the idea of doing that, but so is this something you're looking to pilot to kind of work through it or make the change, just permanently make the change at this point? What is the committee asking the board to do?
Well, I'll go back to the committee, but one of my favorite words in the English language is pilot. So I would, I would characterize it as a pilot.
Okay. And then.
That would require, that would require, you know, I could craft the language for action on that. Because I think that in this scenario that we have now, there's, there, you know, he, Dr. Davenport and the committee laid out like kind of four scenarios. So I could work on, on the language for that. It's almost what we're going to be looking for is to have the initial kind of authorization for having met this requirement come from, you know, the principal making a recommendation. So we may need to just look at how that certification occurs. Because I think what we're all saying is that we believe that requiring community service as a requirement is a, is an important component of the character of the district. It gets a value. So we're not looking to change that. So I'll actually look at the language of the requirement, and we may have some flexibility in how that's done. Because we basically could say to, to the, to, to Dr. Davenport, you know, you need to certify that the students have met this requirement and make that recommendation.
Right. Megan?
I'm just curious if, if we have sought student input on this at all, especially for the outgoing seniors, maybe who have already satisfied their hours and, you know, have really been gung ho about the community service. I'm sure they might have some helpful valuable input as, as we move forward with a pilot or consider doing that.
We have not. Great idea. I'll, I'll bring that back to this Community Service Advisory Committee. Thank you.
Thank you.
Yeah, I mean, I think, I guess there's two things. One is, are we going to approve the change for this year's seniors, which needs to be done pretty soon, right? So that they know. And then the second would be if going forward, we're moving forward with the pilot going forward. So it's almost like two different actions will need to be taken. Is that, is that correct? Yeah.
Yes.
Okay. Any other discussion on this topic? Megan?
Sorry, one last thing. Kind of on the heels of Mark's point, I think if we're soliciting student feedback, it might also be helpful to talk with the ones who haven't found the program helpful and have not completed their hours to see what the barriers were for them so that we can better address those and make it more equitable for, for everybody.
Thank you.
Yeah. Well, thank you, Dr. Davenport and the committee for all the work, you know, thoughtful work put into trying to make this, changes to this requirement.
Thank you for the time and thank you all for your very valuable input.
All right. We're going to move on to good news. Anyone want to share some good news? Matt?
Yep. So it's my understanding that plans are underway for the PTSO to host the CLS Book Fair again this year, which I know has been a pretty popular event in the past. It's going to be done in a virtual format this year, of course, given the current environment. So that's pretty exciting. And I even heard a rumor, not confirm that our superintendent may even sit in a storytime session. So no promises there, but just, just a rumor.
That, that is correct. I'm, I'm suffering from severe anxiety to make sure I hold the book the right way. So I'm going to, I'm going to go over to get some lessons for how to do that most effectively. But yes.
There's no backing out now. It's public now.
Yeah. I, I'm so happy that the, that the PTSO is making it happen in these times. It's pretty, it's pretty exciting.
Yeah. So I would just say the community should look out for this communications on, in that regard.
That sounds great. I would, I would think costumes could be involved, depending on the book you choose. Does anyone else have any good news?
I was just gonna say, I wish we could deliver an ice cream party too.
Oh, yeah. Yeah. Well, I, I think it's good news that we're going to be able to move forward with some sports. I know that the high school athletes will be, are thrilled to hear that, that something hopefully will be coming soon.
We, we are actually expected to be having a track, two, we have two track meets on, on the schedule. Scheduling of them is sort of flexible because of all of the conditions, but we may actually have our first competitive, you know, meet. So that, that will be very exciting.
Yeah.
And I think Tom had some good news that I think he wanted to share. Maybe not. No, okay.
Mark?
I don't know if anybody saw today, but the, the CDC announced that they feel it's favorable to have kids go back to school. So hopefully that's good, good news for students around the country.
Yeah, I wanted to bring up one thing. Thank you for reminding me, Albert. And in your, for your information section, the fiscal stress reports came out last week, and we're at zero, which means no fiscal stress. As you know, four or five years ago, we were on the, you know, we were up there in the state as far as a fiscally stressed school district. So I'm glad to see that we're in a, in a good place as far as that's concerned. When we were in moderate fiscal stress and we've slowly but surely gotten down to it. So we have no designation. The, there is a second part to that. We, that was the fiscal stress, but they added another component a few years ago called the environmental stress. And last year, I think that we were at five. And so this year we're at 10. And so there was two places that we got dinged for, and I just want to bring these up just for your knowledge, and that was the turnover rate of all teachers. I kind of went back and looked at that, and that was a heavy year for retirement. So a lot of that turnover was based on, on retirements. They do put a lot of emphasis on teachers leaving before retirement because they see there's some stress that's moved them out. So that's a very important factor. But looking back at that number, it was, a lot of it was due to retirements that year, last year. And then the other thing was the budget vote because the budget vote was performed via mail. Their designation and cutoff is at, we, we hit a barrier that they, they like you to be over 70%, but last year we were at sixty, little over 65%. So I figure once we get back to the in-person voting, that should go away. And I, we don't see a whole lot of retirements coming up. So I can see that going back to a zero next year. So, but good news overall.
And that's great news. I mean, it's been years we've been on that physical stress list. That's, that's great news. Tremendous. So that's, that's great. And the environmental, I mean, those are, I'm not gonna say, I'm not gonna say anything about those.
A lot of them are out of our control.
Exactly. Anybody else have any good news? Any other good news? Okay. Any old business? Have any? Another opportunity for public comment? Anyone like to? Don't see any. Any other? Mark?
So I just want to let everyone know that I signed up to attend the Capitol Conference next Wednesday. I don't think it's too late if anybody else wants to sign up, but it's from 8:30 till 1:00 on Wednesday, the third. It's all virtual this year. So I'm not sure what is going to be involved in that, but we'll see.
Is this the legislative day? What is this?
Yes.
It's which day is it, Mark?
Wednesday, the third.
And how do we sign up if we want to?
I had Whitney sign me up, but I think you can, I think there's a link out there in your email from NISBA.
Send me an email. I'll sign you up.
All right. Okay. Okay. Any other, other? Okay, we're going to move to our action items. Can I have a motion upon the recommendation of the superintendent of schools to approve the following consent items? Okay, second by Jacqueline. All those in favor? That motion passes. And can I have a motion upon the recommendation of the superintendent of schools to appoint Amanda Alhazin, I hope, as part-time, .5 long-term substitute remote teacher, grade K, at a salary of Step A, 1A, 1BA, 56,996 prorated in accordance with the RTA salary schedule effective 56,996 prorated in accordance with the RTA salary schedule effective January 27, 2021 through June 25, 2021. And I apologize if I mispronounce your name.
Second.
Any discussion? Okay, all those in favor? That motion passes. And can I have a motion to adjourn?
Second.
And all those in favor? Okay, we are adjourned. Thank you, everybody.